Before this meeting starts, I just wanted to introduce former State Representative Kyle Cassell. Judge Peters has asked him to step in and to take his place during this period of time when he's unable to be here. Commissioner, I mean Judge Cassell has agreed to do that, and I wanted to introduce him. He's not sworn in and bonded yet, so he's not participating in today's meeting, but we hope to have him up and running by next Tuesday. So if you get a chance afterwards, please say hello.
Good morning. The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on July 1, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom of the Brazos County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106 in Bryan, Texas. The first item is invocation and pledge, and those will be led by Commissioner Watson.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we humbly bow before your presence. Grant us the wisdom to discern the humility to accept and the strength to follow the path that you've set before us. We seek your guidance, Lord, as we embark on this meeting. May your light shine up on our discussions; may our decisions align with your divine will. And again, as always, we ask that you please keep our first responders safe as they work to protect us. We also ask that you protect the men and women who fight for this nation. So may we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number two are call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Our first speaker this morning is Christine Schimmick. Good morning.
I'm Christine Schimmick, Brazos County resident and taxpayer. Can y'all hear me?
There you go.
The county Commissioners' Court is a constitutional court. Texas Constitution, Article 5, Judicial Department, Section 15, County Court, County Judge. There shall be established in each county in the state a county court, which shall be a court of record, and there shall be elected in each county by the qualified voters a county judge who shall be well informed of the law, I'm sorry, in the law of the state, shall be a conservator of the peace. My question is, what does conservator of the peace mean? Does it mean that the Commissioners' Court can forbid people from clapping? If so, will clapping be forbidden during presentation of an award? Or is this reserved only for the people who are speaking to agenda items? The people fund this court and its activities, yet our freedom of expression is being repressed by general counsel, presumably at the direction of the court. Otherwise, why would the council care? Arguments are the language of dispute resolution. As an analytical chemist at the Texas State Chemists' Office, I routinely evaluated samples for compliance with state law. Violation of state law required that results be defensible in a court of law, and this required an argument that consisted of three parts: a claim or statement of violation, data, evidence obtained from verified lab tests, logic or reasoning that clearly establishes a valid link between the claim and the data or the evidence. Here's a traffic example, number one. Claim: Widening Highway 6 bypass through central Brazos County will improve road capacity. This is self-explanatory. Widen the road, vehicles can pass through at greater volume. Traffic example two. Claim: Highway 6 bypass cannot accommodate future traffic volume capacity, and East Loop will fix this problem. Data: Includes current and recent traffic data for Highway 6 bypass. Reasoning and logic: Remember, this is clearly establishing the validity of the claim for the link between, excuse me, for the link between the data and the claim. Therein lies the problem. The claim assumption is that there is a six-lane road. The data is for a four-lane road. There is no valid logic to link a four-lane traffic data set to a six-lane traffic volume capacity. There are missing steps and missing arguments here. Okay, finally, if the court will not provide a timer clearly visible to speakers, then I pray that this court has the wisdom to provide the people with a 15-second warning before the final buzz. I have presented and timed presenters at international conferences. There is always a warning before the final buzz. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Kathy Vines.
Good morning. While I'm glad there's a presentation on the agenda today by the election administrator, I think it's unfortunate that the new presidential executive orders that went into effect over 90 days ago and the changes that will result are just now being publicly addressed. It is my understanding that the new executive order 14248 requires the EAC to recertify all voting systems by September 21. Sorry. Texas Election Code requires Texas to comply with the Federal Election Assistance Commission, EAC. Brazos County's heart voting system uses software that is currently only tested to 1.0 and therefore needs to be recertified by the EAC by September 21st. There will be an election held in November here in Brazos County. Brazos County uses poll books that do not require EAC certification, but the software in them, called No Ink, is required to be certified and therefore will be required to be recertified in the new update. Is there new software that needs to be installed in the poll books or in the heart software suite of products, the cost for which could have been requested? The deadline for the application for federal funds was yesterday. No federal election funds will be made available without the EAC certification. If Brazos does not get EAC certification, are we prepared to take on the financial consequences? How will that impact county property tax rates, which, as you know, will be decided in this court on August 27? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Balasi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to first welcome Mr. Cassell. Look forward to working with you, and welcome to the Commissioners' Court. I'm going to be brief today. First of all, we are praying for Judge Peters and his family. We hope the best, a full recovery, and we just pray for him. As we go into this Fourth of July weekend, there were many battles that were fought and for this country. But we got our freedom out of it, and we're thankful for that. I believe we live in the best country, the best state, the best county right now, and however, I believe that this is in jeopardy right now for this county, and it has to do with this loop that's proposed. Whether the road goes through your home, 1,000 feet away, through your property, it impacts the freedoms of these landowners and homeowners, and it's going to be taken away if this road goes through. So the board, this is a board that has making these decisions and wanting to decide what's best for us without being able to defend it. We still have not heard any defense. So I'm asking all the Commissioners of this court to follow Patriot Commissioner Brown here and have the courage to put this on the agenda. I would ask for you to do that. It will clear up a lot of things. Let's have an open discussion, and I think that it's fair for everybody so we have a better understanding and we can come more on the same page. Thank you, guys, for serving, and I hope you all have a happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Walter Doherty.
Good morning. Last week, I gave you a draft resolution to prepare for the possibility that the voting machines we currently use will be decertified September 21st, which is 180 days after the President's Executive Order of March 25th. We're now down to 82 days left. So it's prudent that we should plan ahead that if these machines are not recertified, that we will have a detailed written plan in place for handcounting the November 4th election, which is coming up. Just want to give a couple of updates on that. The Federal Election Assistance Commission, the EAC, has now issued a draft revision of the standard, which will be called 2.1. This is in response to the executive order, which required them to update the standard. So the new standard will be 2.1. That is the standard that if it is approved by the EAC, all voting machines will have to be certified in order to be used in an election since Texas Election Code 122.001a3 says that no voting system may be used in Texas that's not EAC certified. So it's a state law that our machines have to be certified, and the current certification is going to expire December 21st. The draft of 2.1 has been released. The EAC has scheduled a public hearing on July 9th, and they have already received over 400 comments and suggestions for changes. So it's probably going to be a long meeting to go through 400 items to see what updates need to be made to the standard, but that is where we are in the process. And again, I think it's prudent that we should plan ahead and prepare a detailed written plan for handcounting in the event that no certified machines are available in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I like the setup. I don't think some do, but I appreciate your input in having this changed up. I like the directness. Just a quick mention on the agenda items that I'm going to speak to, but just in general. You know, I think just from our perspective of sitting in the audience, we know that you guys are bound by the Open Meetings Act. We know that there's no workshop that goes on behind the scenes. So when you guys come up to discuss or not discuss an agenda item, we wonder, why are you not discussing it? You're spending our money. Why are you not having a conversation about it if this is the first time that you guys are talking about it? So just keep that in mind, if you would, please. On agenda items, we'd like to hear you talk. We'd like to hear you discuss how you're spending our money. I mean, it's your money, too. Anyway, okay. So responding to hand-marked ballots undermining trust. Some opponents of hand-marked ballots argue that hand-marking undermines trust and slows down the process. Let me ask a simple question. We already use hand-marked ballots for mail-in and absentee voting. Are they saying we cannot trust those ballots either? Should we get rid of all hand-marked ballots? Every elderly or disabled voter who votes by mail uses a hand-marked ballot. Are those ballots untrustworthy? Should we advocate for suppressing those votes? The logic does not hold up. Would we not have banned mail-in or absentee voting if the act of hand-marking was untrustworthy? Unlike using machines, which you have to wait for one to be opened, we can set up more tables and chairs to accommodate adding more places for voters to vote. Hand-marking ballots have and will continue to be the most transparent, verifiable, and trusted method of voting, despite what the naysayers say. I've provided a packet for you guys. We came up with questions based upon the executive order 14248 that we would like to have answered. Hopefully, I appreciate our election administrator is going to speak to this today, and hopefully some of these questions will be, or all the questions will be addressed at one point or another. Just a couple of highlights regarding the check-in process under number two. If you can make a correction, I made a mistake. It's since the EAC-certified No Ink Poll Pads 3.6, will this device get, it should say, "software hash validation," not hashtag verification, during the logic and accuracy test prior to the November election? Just a couple of highlights regarding the ballots. Are they going to be printed in-house or outside? If by outside, what company will do that? Bruce, can you let me know when I have a minute left, please? Thank you.
Right there.
A minute left? Ah, jeez. Okay. Anyway, I'm going to leave a copy up here of this for our election administrator because I'm not going to walk through all these points. But I've also attached a copy of the EAC printout dated as of yesterday showing that only four systems have been offered up or submitted for testing, and Verity, Heart Verity has not, is not one of those. So it's not in the, it's not in for testing. Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, July 8, True Texas Project is having Kyle and Beverly Greenwood speak regarding the No East Loop. You're all invited. It's at the Phillips Center, starting at 6:30. And then I attached the text of Open Meetings Act. Okay, you'll see it. It's regarding agenda items.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on to number three, presentations and/or discussions. We have a presentation by our elections administrator on voting issues, Trudy Hancock.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I want to begin by assuring the court and the public that I'm aware of the many changes that are occurring within elections. I'm the past president and current member of the Texas Elections Officials Association. I'm part of the advisory group for the Secretary of State's office and a past chair and current member of the Legislative Committee for our state's association. Participation in these groups allows me to stand abreast of any and all changes that occur within elections. So allow me to begin this morning with the executive order 14248. An executive order is directed to federal offices such as Homeland Security, Social Security Administration, the U.S. Secretary of State, and the Elections Assistance Commission, or the EAC. Executive orders are not directed to state or local governments. Executive orders are not directed to state or local governments. Actionable items in the EO are for the agencies included, including amending the National Voter Registration Form and FPCA, provide free access to federal database to help verify eligibility, enforce ballot-by-mail deadlines for federal elections, and it directs the EAC to issue guidance and modify voting system standards to address voting systems and the use of ballots where votes are contained within a barcode. Yes, the decisions of the, and the policies that are put forth by these agencies can and will have an impact on the elections of Texas. But until the federal agencies enact their changes, we, as Texas, cannot make the necessary changes. Citizens have stood before this court and stated that our machines are no longer certified because they contain a barcode, and that because no systems have been certified, we must hand count. I'll read directly from the executive order. Section 3, BI, "The Election Assistance Commission shall initiate appropriate action to amend the Voluntary Voting System Guidelines 2.0 and issue other appropriate guidance establishing standards for voting systems to protect election integrity. The amended guidelines and other guidance shall provide the voting system should not use a ballot in which a vote is contained within the barcode or a quick reference code, quick response code in the vote counting process, except where necessary to accommodate individuals with disabilities, and should provide a voter verifiable paper record to prevent fraud or mistake." II, "Within 180 days of the date of this order, the Elections Assistance Commission shall take appropriate action to review and, if appropriate, recertify voting systems under the new standards established under section BI of this section, and to rescind all previous certifications of voting equipment based on prior standards." It does not say that a ballot cannot contain a barcode or a QR code. It states a voting system should not use a ballot that contain, in which the vote is contained within that barcode or QR code, except for ADA compliance. The Hart Verity system does not tabulate votes using a barcode or a QR code. Verity uses OCR or Optical Character Recognition to tabulate the votes. In other words, it reads the ballot. There are voting systems that do tabulate votes using the barcode, but not Hart Verity. According to II of the, of the, II, the EAC has been given 180 days to take appropriate action to review and, if appropriate, recertify voting systems. The EAC may or may not deem it appropriate to recertify systems. We will not know until they have concluded their hearings and set out their plans. Are there any questions before I continue?
I have some. First of all, thank you for coming over and giving this presentation. So, and this is really for my own education. Although we count the ballots, the Secretary of State of Texas is the ones who certify our elections. Is that correct, or am I misstating that?
The overall, yes. But we do canvass, like each, each county will canvass their own votes. So, for November, the Commissioners Court will meet to canvas those votes, and then our canvases vote, canvassed votes will be considered our official votes and be forwarded to the Secretary of State's office. And then they will hold the statewide official canvas.
Okay. So, have we received any guidance from the Secretary of State of Texas's office regarding changing our election procedures or machines?
No, sir. Like I said, and earlier in my presentation, I am on the Advisory Committee for the Secretary of State's office. We normally meet on Wednesdays through phone conference. And there has been, there's been very lengthy discussions. There is one system that's certified in Texas that does use barcodes to tabulate. Those counties have been advised that they need to do something, you know, to, to change their method of voting. But for the Hart Verity system, no, that has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Trudy, there were, there were, I received an email yesterday from the Secretary of State, and she stipulated that there were eight different pieces of legislation that was passed in this last session. Have you seen those yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And we're in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's, we'll move on to discuss SB 2753. SB 2753 will fundamentally change the timeline that Texas has been using since 1987. We will be moving to a voting period. Currently, we begin early voting on Monday. We vote two weeks with early voting closing on Friday, the Friday before Election Day giving us a break. We will now begin voting 12 days before Election Day, which will put early voting beginning on a Wednesday, and we will vote, voting will continue through Election Day. So, what that means for Brazos County voters is that we will open our five early voting locations and begin voting on that Wednesday. We'll vote two weeks, including, including two Saturdays and Sundays, two full weekends, with Sunday hours increasing from six to nine, and then we will open the additional 23 locations for Election Day. So, this bill has several negative impacts for counties, including an increase in funding. Our funding costs for payroll will increase by voting through the end weekends. It will increase overtime for election workers and clock time for my staff. Most of our early voting workers or election, election day judges, and because of chain of custody, those, those lead clerks will no longer be able to move from an early voting location to an Election Day location. They'll be tied to that original location that they're at. So, we have several that are lead, lead clerks, say, like Marla Calvin. She is the lead clerk for early voting for College Station Utilities. But we usually move her to the Brazos Center for Election Day. We will no longer be able to do that, just because, for chain of custody purposes, she will have to stay at the place that she opens originally. So, logistically for us, that's going to be some adjustment. I'm concerned about fatigue for these workers. The median age for our election workers are 79. So, most of our election workers are retired and able to, you know, to work the hours. In the past, they've had Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to rest and prepare for Election Day. So, there will be no work for them, so I'm concerned that we could lose Election Day workers because of this, because if they've worked a week of 12-hour days, which really for them puts them at about 14 hours by the time they open early, and then by the time they get everything closed, and then go right into an Election Day. So, another issue that we face is our Early Voting Ballot Board. It currently meets on Saturday to qualify the bulk of the mail ballots. The Early Voting Ballot Board normally convenes in the Ruth McLeod Training Room, but because that voting will still be occurring in that location, we will have to find another location for the board to meet. This is problematic because Section 127.1232 of the Texas Election Code requires that we record and livestream any time that the Early Voting Ballot Board is handling or qualifying ballots. So, that means the location that we're at, we'll have, we'll have to install cameras to be able to attach to our livestream that we use to, to be in compliance with that section. Finding a suitable location will be difficult, and another consequence of voting period, the voting period, is that there will be no early results for Election Night. So, since the equipment from early voting will be deployed through Election Day, results released at 7:00 PM on Election Night will only be ballots by mail. So, as a candidate, you're used to getting any early voting results at 7:00 on Election Night. That will no longer be. The only results that will be released at 7:00 on Election Night will be those for the, for ballots by mail, because that will be the only thing that will have been counted at that time.
Trudy, this sounds like an unfunded state mandate. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
How mu, how much do you think it's going to cost the county?
I don't, I, I'm, we have a meeting set up with IT to talk about locations and putting in the cameras. That's, you know, that will be a cost for the county and how, how, you know, how extensive that's going to be for IT and for that department. Payroll, I've, I've done some light calculations. It's going to increase this probably upwards of $3,000 to $5,000.
Per person, or?
No, no, per election, probably.
Per election, okay. So, did, when, when the legislature was working on this, did they not have any consultants like you, people who, who understand the operations of, of elections, to help them to talk about some of the problems?
Yes, ma'am. And there were, there were quite a few testimonies given at, at, at the hearings for the bills. This bill came out of the Senate. When it went to the House, it passed with amendments, then went to committee, and then the committee was the one that put forth the final version of the bill. So, and at the committee hearings, our association did give some testimony, so.
Trudy, I can assure you that Representative Casale or myself would not have voted for this.
I mean, in theory, in theory, I understand, you know, starting one, starting and not stopping until you're completely finished. But there are a lot of logistical pieces.
Right.
We've done elections this way since 1987, so it's going to take a little bit of time to, to work the problems out, so.
Right. And as one who's worked the elections in my other life, I, I completely empathize with those workers and what it is like, because a 14-hour day is, can be tough. But I, but again, I don't ever want to take away a person's right to vote.
Correct.
So, whatever it takes, but this is, this is, I can understand the problems that you're going to have, and I just hope that, you know, you can, we can accommodate you in the best way that we can, because it's going to be interesting to see, and maybe we can get it adjusted in the next legislative session.
Right. And that is one thing. I know that the, the bill is, effective date is September 1st, but it also says that the changes cannot be implemented until the SOS has developed a plan, published the plan in the Texas Register, consulted with the county elections officials, and is confident that the counties are prepared to implement the plan. But it has to take place before 2027. I think September 1st, 2027. So, we do have a little bit of time, and there is another legislative session to hopefully make some adjustments to the, to the current bill.
Okay.
So. One thing that the bills, 2753, did not do, though, it was stated here, I think in the last Commissioners Court, that it did away with countywide polling places. 2753, in its original language, did include eliminating the countywide program, but in its final and signed version, that was removed. So, the countywide polling place policy is still in place.
Good.
So, any other questions before we move on?
No.
Okay. And about the, I want to talk a little bit about the HOBA grant. The Secretary of State's office opened a new HOBA grant. The funding allocation for counties with 101 registered voters to 1 million voters is $52,000 with a 20%, match for the county. The grant is very specific in what it would pay for. It would cover expenses to comply with Section 128, 129.003, dealing with paper, the paper audit trail, and was limited to counties not currently in compliance. Brazos County is in compliance. It is also, would cover replacement of electronic poll books used in the 2024 November general election that were decertified after December 1st, 2024. Brazos County would not qualify under that. Our poll books were not recertified. It also covers expenses to comply with Section 127.1232, which is security of the voting ballots, dealing with recording and live streaming of voted ballots. Brazos County is currently in compliance. It would not qualify for any additional funds. The last allowable expense for the election security related, is election-related, election security-related projects, such as DIR Management Security Services, physical security of election-related property, election-specific IT upgrades or poll pads. I've met with the Chief Security Officer for the county to determine if we had any needs in this area. We determined that Brazos County does not currently have any needs in those areas at this time. Therefore, I did not apply for the grant. I was contacted by members of this court and asked about on-demand printers, so I wanted to cover that just a little bit this morning. On-demand printers probably would have been covered under that grant, but let me explain exactly what that is. It's not a printer that you can just go to Best Buy or Walmart and purchase. It is a whole voting system. It is a system, it is a complete system, just like what we have now. The only difference is, is that when you check in, your ballot is printed while you stand there and wait, then you're given a pencil, and you can vote that ballot, and then it is placed into a scanner and counted, so it is still electronically counted. The example given to the court was Collin County. Collin County recently went to a demand system where in the polling place, when you check in, your ballot is printed, the voter marks the ballot, and then it's placed in a scanner to be counted. The cost for that system was $2.3 million, with them being able to use a portion of the system that they already used, that was not buying the complete system. One reason Collin County moved to the on-demand system was that their previous system used barcodes and tabulated their, their votes using the barcodes. Again, the Verity, the Hart Verity system does not tabulate votes using a barcode or a QR code. It has also suggested that we purchase tables, ballot boxes, and other materials to hand count. Those items were not allowable expense under the grant, and even if it was an allowable expense, I don't feel it would be a prudent purchase to order and store our items that we have no need for. So, any questions on the grant? Okay. I'd like to close by giving a definition of subject matter expert. A subject matter expert is a person who possesses deep and specialized knowledge in a particular field or topic, often acquired through extensive education, training, and practical experience. You know, at one time, I shied away from calling myself a subject matter expert in elections. It just didn't feel right. It felt boastful. I have over 20 years of practical experience in running elections. I'm a certified and registered elections official for the state of Texas. I'm a nationally certified elections and registration administrator. I have served on numerous boards, including the Texas Association of Elections Administrators, the Legislative Committee for the Texas Association of County Elections Officials, the Secretary of State's Advisory Board, and the U.S. Elections Assistance Commission Local Leadership Council. I think I have earned the title of subject matter expert. I don't ask this court to follow me blindly, but I do ask that you consider one thing. My agenda is only that the voters of Brazos County are able to cast their ballot in a safe, fair, and transparent election. Others who come before this court bring half-truths and spin things to fit their own agenda. I'm here only to serve the voters of Brazos County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Trudy is one who has worked with you in my other life. I appreciate and acknowledge you are a subject matter expert from my perspective, and I was always very appreciative of how you operated the election, and I always got a chance, I got to be, call it in the secret location when you were counting the voluminous mail-in ballots of 2020. So, again, I personally thank you for a job well done.
Item number four, approval of proclamation 25-027, proclaiming July 17th, 2025 as Brazos Valley Veterans Memorial Day. Do we have folks here to receive the proclamation?
Pam not here?
Pam's not.
I have to hit her up if you want me to.
Yes, sir. That'd be great, Sheriff. Yes, sir. Sheriff Wendicki will come and receive it. Yes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same side? All right. The writing is a little smaller than, than normal. Or I'm a little blinder. Whereas, the Brazos Valley Veterans Memorial was officially recognized as a nonprofit organization on July 17th, 2000, with the mission to construct a lasting tribute to all military veterans and to provide educational opportunities that remind us, freedom comes with a heavy price. And whereas, the memorial is sustained by the dedication of all, of an all, excuse me, by the dedication of an all-volunteer board, and supported by the cities of Bryan and College Station, Brazos County, and countless generous community members and organizations. And... And whereas, what began as 12 acres of undeveloped land has, over the past 25 years, become a powerful and informative place of remembrance, featuring the 250-ton Wall of Honor, 18 memorial sites, 24 life-sized bronze statues, and a pathway that tells the story of our nation's military history. And whereas, the Wall of Honor now bears the names of more than 6,760 military veterans, and continues to grow each year as residents add their loved ones to be honored during the annual Veterans Day ceremony. Now, therefore, I, Chuck Conderla, as, as the county judge stand-in, and also with mayors John Nichols and Bobby Gutierrez, do hereby proclaim July 17th, 2025, a Brazos Valley Veterans Memorial Day, and encourage all residents to visit the memorial from 5:30 to 7:00 for a special open house tours in honor of its 25th anniversary. Let this memorial no longer be a hidden gem, but a place everyone in our community knows, visits, and treasures. And I believe we'll have the Commissioners Court come down and we'll take a picture. Thank you for standing. And where do we, where do we take, hey, there's Pam. Against the wall, okay. While every, while everybody's moving into position, I would just like to share with the people that are here today that the Veterans Memorial is really, it really is a hidden gem in this community. It is, it represents the best of the best from all over the state. And there's more than 15 different sites that represent different conflicts and wars that we've been, excuse me, that we've been involved in, and it's a great honor to our veterans. And if you haven't been out there, go out and visit it. Thank you. What do we do, Barbara?
Kind of shift that way a little so that I don't have to worry about the podium. Yeah, the podium is, is going to make it. All right.
I didn't give that to the sheriff and then take it back, we actually have one other mayor that's got to sign it, just in case you're wondering. Okay, number five, item number five, approval of the following liability renewal questionnaire for Texas Association of Counties with coverage dates of October 1st, 2025 through October 1st, 2026.
Move approval A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd, I'd like to request that they also get some, some bids from Travelers Insurance. Just because it's the Texas Association of Counties doesn't mean it's the best price and value for the county, so.
Any other discussion? A motion and a second for items A through E, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item six, approval requested from Risk Management for permission to allow Texas A&amp;M PhD student to use the Brazos Center Park for a research project.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All right, have fun with those sparrows. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number seven, approval of renewal of contract 24-099, concierge service for Brazos County Exposition Complex with hot mess catering and concessions.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I called Charles in yesterday because there was a number of items on here that it didn't look like they were local businesses. But he did come in and explain to me that they were local businesses, so I don't have any problem with this item.
So, so my concern, and not necessarily with this item, but it comes, it's a renewal of a contract that comes to us after the contract expires. That doesn't seem to be timely. I think that we need to address this in the future, so the items come to us 30 days before the renewal date, so we have time to actually make decisions, instead of being rushed to decide something when we're already under the gun.
And I, I echo that comment, this expired yesterday, and here we are approving it today, so it works, but puts us, you know, you don't have a lot of, yeah, 30 days, I think, is a proper amount of time for the court to be able to consider these things.
And it really should have gone out for bid, you know, long before it came back to us today.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. Item number eight, approval of Amendment 1 to 24-133, grant application and administrative services with Trailer and Associates, extending the term to coincide with the termination date of the written contract between the county and the United States Department of Treasury.
Move to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Yeah, we do have a speaker. Okay. Kathy Vines, would you like to approach this, Dais?
I was hoping to be a little bit of dialogue in there, since this is the American Rescue Plan Act, and I think, haven't, hasn't all that funding been dispersed? And why are we continuing to pay? And it, does it add to the $1.8 million original contract? Does, well, let me point out, though, I'm, I'm asking what you're voting on, and I'm grateful for what Charles will add. But as was stated earlier, when we, when we hear you voting on things, we're assuming that you're educated on these. So, I'm kind of wondering, do you guys know what you're voting on, on this particular agenda item?
We do, we bring staff forward because they're who we discuss things with, and particularly with purchasing and, and the contracts. Charles is a great person to come up and speak, that keeps us from being able to, that keeps the court to be able to address the item without the back and forth. And so, we're going to bring Charles forward to discuss that.
Thank you.
The ARPA funds have been committed by Commissioners Court, they have not all been dispersed yet. We still have until December of 2026 to finalize those.
26, you said, right.
Of those disbursements. And so, we are on track, as far as we're aware, to comply with all the timelines of the ARPA grant funding.
This does not add an expense.
This does not.
It does not, but the contract is still what it is.
Right. This lines up the dates between the two.
This allows us to continue, the grant administrator will help with continuing to monitor those, to make sure that we're in compliance with all of the requirements, as well as potentially any audit that would be done by the federal government. It would extend this to gain their assistance through that contract period.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
No, no, have a second.
Excuse me?
No, 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 no.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item number eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. Item number nine, approval of IQ number 25-109, mail services for Brazos County with INTEG.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, do we have any discussion on this item?
My concerns are the same, but they seem to be doing a good job, but, you know, this expires June 30th, yesterday. Would have been nice to get it a month ago.
Yep, again, I echo those comments. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item 10, agreement, excuse me, approval of agreement 25-137 for secure, long-term residential service of juvenile offenders with Victoria County.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item number 11, approval of service contract CIP 25-536, server refresh for Brazos County with Freeat Data Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $10,200 for installation.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, and we have a speaker on this item, any discussion? Okay, Kathy Vines, would you?
I actually was able to speak to Ms. Connor, and she answered my questions on that.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item 12, permission to advertise RFP CIP 25-538 VoIP phone system replacement countywide.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank you for finally getting this, Eric, that we need, our, our system is so dilapidated, I'm not sure I can figure out how to use it.
Amen.
I can't access my voicemails, it's just, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this.
Yeah, good job, Eric, and your team, thank you. Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. Item 13, approval of CIP 25-590, facilities assessment phase two with VLK Architects. Phase two, part one includes full building assessments of the Brazos Center, courthouse, sheriff's administration, building, and the jail. Phase two, part two A includes an envelope assessment for 18 buildings. Phase two, part two B includes ADA evaluations for 18 buildings. The total project will be $428,437.20. We'll have discussion, and then I have some speakers as well, any discussion?
We haven't had a motion yet.
I'm sorry.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion and a second, and now we'll have discussion.
Double approved?
Yeah.
I, I thought we had gotten rid of this last week when we tabled it, and I'm, I tell you what, I'm really disappointed that we're going to spend $428,000 on a, on a, on a company in Houston that comes up here and tells us what's wrong with our buildings, when we are in the shadow of the greatest university in the United States, and it seems like we could get some local people to do what these people are going to do for a whole lot less money, so.
I can tell you, when I was a lieutenant and ran a, ran a motor pool, so the drivers and assistant drivers maintained those vehicles, and that's what we have here. Our facility folks maintain the business operating systems in our buildings. But they do not look for the high-value items, like when do you replace a transmission? Which, every, my frustration in being on this court is, every week, we seem to have another emergency. And this helps us to identify those big-ticket items and plan for their replacement. So, I'm very much in favor of this, I don't care whether they're in Brazos County or outside, but we need to do this. We need to have more visibility on the large-ticket items that have to be replaced in our county buildings in order to make sure they continue to function and service the constituents of this county.
I agree, and, you know, deferred maintenance, but it's self-explanatory, unfortunately, and it's not unique to the county. You know, any operation, I began former life at A&amp;M, A&amp;M had deferred maintenance, and at some point, it does get out of control, and it, it becomes a large-ticket item. And if we don't address it now, it's going to become even more expensive. And Brazos County has some wonderful businesses here, but they're not all able to do what they do. They're small, small county businesses, and I don't think that they all have the expertise that we need to get this resolved. So, I agree with Commissioner Nettles, I think that we need to approve this, and we need to get the work done now, because the cost is going to be exponentially higher if we continue to go back and forth on this.
I'll just add to the comments that this is a budgeted item, and if you don't understand the importance of looking forward versus fixing things that they happen, just hang out for the next motion, and you'll see why that matters. We do have some speakers today, Mr. Nick Filippella?
Thank you very much for giving me a chance to force my opinion on this situation. It seems to me that we maybe already have an abundance of consultants in this county. And this board and previous boards that I'm addressing right now seem to have no limit to what they want to spend. And I'm here to say that we need to start reeling into spending, because sooner or later, your taxpayers are going to run out of money. And in addressing this situation, I'd like to reassess Commissioner Brown's suggestion to using employees that use these buildings to tell us, or tell you, what's wrong with them, and include that, and any other maybe hidden things, in your request for proposals to contractors to bypass this $428,000. I mean, you just don't go down the road and pick up $428,000. And I would hope you would reconsider, and using the employees, they know what's best for these buildings, they're in them every day, they know what's wrong with them, if it's leaky toilets, or a crack in the foundation, or whatever. They would be a good source to evaluate this, and then start your request for proposals. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kathy Vines?
I'm not well-versed in finances, but I would happen to take a look at our 2025 budget, approved budget for this year. And it seems like some of these buildings are, have capital improvement projects already, so I'm wondering how we came up with the numbers to put capital improvement projects into the budget for this year if we didn't have some sort of assessment plan in place already to know that those things had to be done. I also happen to notice that this consulting fee, I think it's in addition to the, the main contract with 06, it's that, it lists all these buildings and all the costs for each of the buildings. And if you'll notice, the first sentence says, they're going to provide a cursory assessment. Well, I guess that, to me, my mind, cursory assessment, isn't that what our employees could do? A cursory assessment, why are we paying, you know, 15, 8,000, 10,000, 15,500? All this money for cursory assessments, it doesn't make sense to me, it seems not a good use of our spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Wiley?
Again, good morning. In looking at this, and I know we kind of chatted about it last week, but, so I did some research on this VLK Architects. They're an architectural firm for design, the concept. I'm assuming that they responded to the RFQ for being a, like a GC. They're going to manage the data that's going to come in, but they're themselves are not doing the actual assessments. I guess the obvious question is, why, why has the county not been doing this? I don't understand this, we spend so much money every week. I, I see on the maintenance phase two paperwork, it says, this was the county's first try at deferred maintenance. I guess we've just been putting out fires. And now that we have the opportunity to have our people focus on paying attention to maintenance items, foundational items, structural items, why don't we give it a try and let our people see if they can actually perform? Give them a checklist of the things that they need to be aware of. If we haven't asked them to focus on it, of course, we haven't been getting any data from them that says we have a problem, because the county's not asked that of them. So, I think it's a lot of money that we could better use to get specific inspectors. Ones that do HVAC, ones that do structural, ones that do landscaping, one that do plumbing. I think we have, you know, we have tech, I know tech people around here, we have a lot of experts that can actually, probably, we can hold them accountable and send them out and go do some research based upon what our people bring back information to us. My last comment is, I really, really, really wish that this body would do a financial diet. There is so much money that gets spent. There is so much money that gets spent out of this county, and a lot of it is putting out fires. And I think that is reactive, it's not proactive, and I'm very, it upsets me, because I try not to live by a reactive mode, but being proactive. So I just ask, would you please, please be proactive? Let our people at least give it a try to go and do check-offs. Thank you.
Jody Quimby.
I also would like to make a few comments and offer a few questions regarding item 13, this facilities assessment. Offering the questions, I know that we'll get the answers after I get through, but first of all, this is about a phase two, and I realize we had some, there was some discussion on this topic last week, but what was phase one and what did it cost? What did it cover? And I understand it may still be in process from what was discussed last week, so that's my first question. Second is, this list gives us, indicates twenty-two buildings. Is this all the buildings that the county owns?
No.
Okay, so how many buildings does the county own? Was the rest of them included in phase one? The, the item here is about a facilities assessment, and just to not lose the context here, this doesn't resolve anything with any problems. This just says, hey, the sink's leaking, or the door's squeaky, or the bricks are falling off, okay? I too believe that it's not necessary to have a full-fledged architect firm from out of town tell you what's wrong with your properties. If our employees in Brazos County can't provide that information to you, I think you need some different employees, okay? The, the thing that really rubs me wrong here is this is a high-powered architectural firm. You're looking to hire to do something that's rudimentary, and it's not going to solve any problems. It just waves the flag, okay, and says, hey, you have a problem. As the commissioner said, if the transmission's out, maybe the mechanic, maybe the driver doesn't know, but the mechanic sure knows, and so I'd urge you to consider what the work product here is, and it's not a solution for anything. It's just saying, hey, we got a problem. And that's not worth $400,000, okay? It would cost something if you hired individual inspectors or qualified people to give you some advice, and then if they're local, they might not charge you anything. Typically, you don't get any charge for a bid on something. Advice, it would take their time, and it may cost you a little, but it's not, I don't believe it's going to cost you anywhere near this $400,000. So I would ask you to table this item again and rethink it, rather than just jumping on the bandwagon and saying, hey, let's spend a bunch of money for an opinion that doesn't solve any problems. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, and that's the last speaker on that item. Any further discussion? A motion and a second. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion passes. Item 14, Approval of Service Contract CIP 25-602 Replacement of HVAC System for Brazos County Employee Clinic and Elections Building with Carrier Commercial Services in the amount of $89,250.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments on this?
We had a long discussion on this, and, and you know, what this does is just redo the cassettes.
Yeah, this is one, I don't want, go ahead Fred, I'm sorry.
And I think, I think we were all concerned at the time when the presentation was made that this isn't going to last long. I mean, we talked about, Bentley, what were the things that, the air conditioners that we talked about installing in place of these cassettes that are so expensive to maintain?
Split something.
Yeah.
Split. Many splits.
Many splits, yeah. So I guess there's nothing we can do at this point, but the bad thing is, we know that this cassette system isn't going to last for very long, and we're going to be right back with the same problem that we have now.
That's a concern I have too. I mean, to replace or design a system for that size building, we're talking a lot of, a lot of money, a lot more than this. This is, I guess, slightly better than a Band-Aid, and it does repair the cassette systems. It also allows us to take advantage of warranties on the compressors, so they expect to get about five years additional out of that life of the building. Right now, it's not cooling the building, so we have people working in there without, you know, approaching, here we are, July staring at us. But this, this would allow us to take advantage of some warranty claims against the compressors, repair the cassettes, and ultimately let this court prepare for what would be a larger expense, five years hopefully or more down the road.
Well, and this is part of the problem that we've been talking about, is
Yes.
This was identified last year, and then not addressed until this summer. And so although we have great employees in the county, we need somebody that's kind of shepherding this a little better, so...
And to the, to that same point, items 13, 15, we have budgeted items. This isn't budgeted. You'll be, this is why you have a contingency, and to be able to pay for it out of contingency is the plan. But again, yeah, frustrating to have this pop up. If court is ready, I'll call up our speaker, Cindy Wiley.
So actually, mine is a combination of this agenda item and 17, which I believe is the budget, budgeted amount for it. And Bruce said I could combine these two. From what I understand, this unit was installed eight years ago during a remodel, and if that's the case, usually these units have a 10-year warranty. So has anybody gone back and investigated the warranty issue? You have? Okay. So I'm assuming it doesn't, there's no warranty on it at this point?
The compressors.
Okay. No warranty? It's extended? It's expired?
On the compressors.
Okay. And then was this item anticipated, or did anybody have knowledge that this was happening, and how long has it been happening? So that it could have been budgeted out is another question I have. And then on the, if you look at the proposal from Carrier, it addresses the Employee Medical Center and Voting Center. The expiration date on the proposal is April 22nd of 2025, but the amount is $103,791. And so I'm just confused about what the actual cost is, because the dollar amount in the agenda item is $89,250. So I don't know if you guys can answer that question? Or is that?
It's a budget, yeah. Nina, welcome to the meeting. How are you?
Since it's referred to a budget amendment, I will go back and answer her question during that time.
Do you want? Oh, okay. Okay, I guess I'm good. Other than, did you answer my question on why the, this proposal has an expired date of April 22nd?
Charles, do you? Or Trevor? I'm confused by that.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, sitting judge.
Sitting judge.
We've been working on this for a while, trying to dial it in and get this done. They've, I mean, I've got emails honoring the, honoring the number. We can get an updated date on a, we can get a refresh quote with the same date. It'll be the same price, but if that'll please the court, we make it work. And then the, I don't want to speak for Nina, but the cost difference between the budget amendment and what's on court for the service contract is this is broken up into, the number that you see for the eighty-nine is strictly the labor to do the work. The budget amendment also covers the materials and commissioning for the job, so that's where the difference comes in.
Thank you for covering that, yeah.
The changes in the date, the preferred date, the expiration date of April? I missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we, like I said, we've been working on this a while, all the way back to April, and they're going to honor the pricing. I can get a refresh quote with a, with a current date on it, so we've just been chugging away at this, trying to get it done, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this agenda item 14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 15, Approval of Pricing Proposal for CIP 25-603 Medical Examiner's Office Construction Materials Testing Phase Two with Dudley Engineering in the amount of $75,000.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion? I'll just add that this is an item, this amount is budgeted in the project, local company.
Yeah, Mark Dudley over there.
Any other comments? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 16, Approval Requested for Tax Refund Application for Randall Hofler in the amount of $125.39 pursuant to Tax Code Section 33.011.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 17, Budget Amendments, FY 24-25 Budget Amendments 37.01-37.07. Nina?
Sorry, now I feel it's appropriate to answer the question. Regarding the budget amendment, so there's three different invoices or quotes that are attached to the budget amendment, two are from Carrier. One was the $86,000 for the service. The other one is going to be $103,000 for the parts, and then of course, for commissioning for $40,000, so that's where the budget amendment amount is coming from. Okay? Any questions on that part?
What is commissioning?
That will be a Trevor question, and I'll bring him up here.
What is commissioning?
It's commissioning, right? Okay.
So we currently have a contract with Tom Green Company and Engineers that they handle the commissioning, which is part of, they're involved in the design process, making sure that it meets the needs of the county, and then they perform pre-functional tests and final tests, acceptance tests on the system. So part of the reason that we're in the situation that we're in is we did not have commissioning on this system when it was installed, and it's an extra set of eyes, subject matter experts, as we like to, like to say, to make sure that these systems go in the way that they are designed. The system specifically for the clinic or the McLeod building is a very finicky system, and when there are, there's very delicate issues, and so an extra set of eyes that know exact, this is the only, only building that we have that has this system in it, and so no one really on staff is all that well-versed in how these systems work, or certified, and the ability to service them. And so these guys, they know it, they've seen these systems hundreds of times, they know the issues that come up all over the place. We've talked about it several times as we've worked towards what this solution is going to look like, and they will be there, boots on the ground, making sure that it goes in the way it should, so that it does last, not just five years, but hopefully 10, so...
And how much is the, is the commissioning part?
It's not to exceed $40,000.
$40,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me ask you something. You know, when we, when I ever have to replace an air conditioning system in my home, I don't have a commissioning group come in and commission it, or whatever you're talking about, but I hear so often in this court, when we do something, we hire commissioners.
Yeah, so these systems are way more complex than what you've got in your home, Commissioner.
No, I understand that, but the people that are putting them in, they know what they're doing, so I don't understand why we have to pay $40,000 to have somebody come in and put their good, good housekeeping seal of approval on it, you know?
I, we can, I can explain their value to you in several different ways, and we've seen it already on multiple projects that we've done. I think they more than bring their value to the table through the design process and through the construction process. We can have, you know, further discussion or workshop to discuss those things, but...
So Trevor, they're essentially the owner's representative, right? They're the county's representative there to make sure that what's being proposed by the vendor will actually do the job that we're asking them to be done.
That's correct. They're engineers, MEP engineers for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems that were, you know, whether it's a new construction project, or remodel, or even kind of these one-off fixes that we're trying to do both at the jail and at the clinic are helping us out. We don't employ MEP engineers.
So this is sort of a way to say ethically, if a vendor is proposing to sell us a project or install a project, that they're, what they say they're doing is what we're getting, because we, I know from a personal perspective, I've gotten burned where, you know, I sort of got sold a bill of goods because I didn't know what I was getting, I just thought I was trusting of the vendor.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that kind of where we're going with this?
It is.
And how long have we owned that building?
I believe it was eight, seven or eight years. Well, we've owned it for well long after that. It was the tax office before, it was the clinic and...
But we didn't build the building. Did we build it?
That was before my time.
Okay.
Constable Ambo says no.
We didn't build it, okay.
Houston Western Auto.
Okay. So the system...
We did, we did.
So we inherited this, we purchased the system.
I'm sorry, no, no.
Yeah, we purchased the system.
The building got a full gut when we built the new tax office and remodeled. We left the structural in, yeah, just the structure, just the structural steel and the slab, but all that did get replaced.
Ed, did you have something you wanted to add?
Ed Bull, Chief of Staff, I just wanted to point out to the court, commissioning is something that we haven't done in the past, but we've actually become aware of its use and our needed use, really, because of the litigation potential that I think everyone is aware of, that we've looked at in regards to juvenile. Juvenile, we've had extremely troubling issues. We are still in the process of working through those. We became aware that commissioning is not necess, not a want, it's a need. It's really something that we need to continue doing to make sure that these buildings are engineers and taken care of the way they need to be.
So your point is we could pay for outside lawyers, or we could pay for a commissioner, owner's representative, is that your, is that the trade-off?
Well, I could say we can get, we could pay for commissioners upfront and get the job done right, or have to pay lawyers and deal with potential litigation, repairs, mediation, and maybe even court cases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Wanda, I didn't need to...
Wanda, you bring it to say.
Well, he sort of answered my question in with your question.
So we have a, item 17, Budget Amendments, we have a motion and a second, all those...
Move to approve.
Excuse me.
We do not have a motion or a second.
Oh, apologies, apologies. Budget amendments.
Okay, move, move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We've had discussion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number 18, Personnel Change of Status.
I move to approve.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 19, Payment of Claims, Approval of Payment of Claims, A is 821-0448 through 821-0571, and B is 920-4865 through 920-4947.
Move, move to approve.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Move to approve.
Okay. A and B?
A and B, thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll skip 20 and 21 down to 22. Acknowledgement of the Brazos County Emergency Services District ESD-1 Annual Financial Report for the year ended September 30th, 2024. And 23 is acknowledgement of the Brazos County Emergency Services District ESD-3 Annual Financial Report for the year ending September 30th, 2024. And item 24 is acknowledgement of the FY 2024 through 2025. And item twenty-four is acknowledgement of the FY twenty, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five budget to actuels by fund as of June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Acknowledgement of the FY twenty, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five contingency budget to actuels by fund as of June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Item twenty-five, juvenile directors' report on detention population. Linda?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. We presently have fifteen juveniles in detention, eleven males and four females, lowest population we've had in...
Wow.
That's great.
A long time. We have thirty-six on electronic monitors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is low. All right, that's a hard act to follow, Sheriff. Sheriff's report on inmate population, five, no, I'm just kidding.
A little more than fifteen. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-four today, six-hundred-and-fifty-three men, a hundred-and-one women, and forty-four on monitors.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Just a little more. The good work they do at detention hopefully will keep them from coming to your place.
I'm trying to get them out, but the judge won't comply.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay. Announcement of interested items and possible future agenda topics, and I'll start. The Commissioners Court, scheduled for Tuesday, July twenty-second, has been canceled to allow court members to attend the North and East Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference in Waco, Texas. And I think I can speak for the court here, just continued prayers for healing for Dwayne Peters.
Yes.
Yes.
And, uh, and prayers over Kyle Casell as he steps in. There's one or two things going on in the court right now that are contentious. So bless you and thank you for accepting that, uh, assignment as well. Anyone else?
So I just take the opportunity to wish everybody a happy July fourth, but please be safe from my former job. Don't drink and drive. If you're using fireworks, set them off a safe distance. We had an incident with my oldest son two years ago where he thought it would be perfectly safe to take a bottle, not a bottle, a Roman candle and set it off holding it, and the thing blew up in his hand, and we was very lucky that he was only minorly injured. So take that opportunity to make sure that if you're around it, people are doing it safely.
And if any of you all are going to England over the weekend, remember, they're still mad at us for seventeen-seventy-six.
Yeah. Talk about holding a grudge.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go back up to item twenty, which is to convene an executive session. Give me a minute if you would. Okay, item twenty. Bruce, do we need a vote? Oops, something like that. What? Nope, all right. So for the first item, we'll need Bruce, Ed, Allison, Leslie, Aubrey. For the second item, Bruce, Allison, Ed, Joe, Aubrey. And for the final item, Bruce, Allison, Ed, and Aubrey. If y'all will join us in executive, and we'll go from there.
Time?
Time is eleven-twenty-two.
Okay.
Coming out of executive session, item 21, consider impossible action on executive sessions. I'd like to make a motion, a move that Commissioner Bentley Nettles be authorized to sign all documents necessary to complete the mediated settlement agreement between the county, the City of Bryan, the City College Station, Texas A&M University, Upwell, and the groundwater district.
Move to approve?
Well, I moved.
Oh, you moved it. Okay, second, I'm sorry.
Motion is seconded into discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I vote on it?
Is he allowed to vote on it?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next motion is to adjourn, or next agenda item is to adjourn. It is 12:07.